... into the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Bear with me, I have several announcements to make here tonight. First off, I'm establishing an Agaming Park Task Force. The goal of the task force will be work with the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service to establish the maintenance plan for the portion of Agaming Park the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service manages for the city of Winona. Once the task of completing the maintenance plan is complete, the task force can disband. I'm appointing the following members to the Agaming Park Task Force. Richie Swanson, Mike Kennedy, Barry Draskowski, and Jim Gromick. City staff Chad Hubel. This Thursday from 5:00 to 7:00 at the Winona County History Center, Engage Winona will be there celebrating their second year. It's an opportunity for people to show up and connect in meaningful conversations, hear about the good work they've been up to, and participate in We Are All Winona, a special interactive activity that showcases the unique connections and communities we share with each other. And that's, no RSVPs, free and open to all, 5:00 to 7:00 this Thursday. I have a proclamation, begins, "Whereas all people, regardless of race, gender, income, or geography, have a right to a healthy, sustainable environment, as well as economic growth and opportunity. And whereas achieving a green economy will require cooperation across all sectors of society, and whereas all of us, as caretakers of our planet, have an obligation to combat climate change and environmental degradation to preserve the earth's beauty as well as its resources. And whereas the city of Winona participates in the Green Step Cities Program and Tree City USA Program to better meet our environmental obligations. And whereas the city of Winona will celebrate the annual Earth and Arbor Day special event on Saturday, April 27, 2019, at the East End Rec Center in partnership with local organizations. And whereas the city of Winona is committed to building on the success and dedicated to inspiring action through local education and activism." Now therefore, I, Mayor Mark Peterson, hereby proclaim Saturday, April 27, 2019, as Winona Earth and Arbor Day in the city of Winona. We have another one here. Whereas nurses from the region have celebrated nursing research annually for eighteen years by hosting this unique collaborative conference. And whereas Nursing Research on the Green is a forum for recognizing nursing scholarship and sharing research and clinical practice innovations. The planners designed the conference for nurses working in any setting, as well as student nurses. The purpose is to promote utilization of the evidence-based practice and research through the dissemination of research findings and sharing of innovative ideas. The morbidity and mortality rates are improved when nurses use evidence-based practice. And whereas the theme of the 2019 conference is the healing threads of connectiveness, nurses empowering others. Over seven hundred region nurses will engage in this energetic and scholarly experience. And whereas the conference is jointly provided by Gunderson Health, Gunderson Lutheran, Gunderson Medical Foundation Logistics Health, Mayo Clinic Health System, Franciscan Healthcare, Mayo Clinic Health System, Franciscan Healthcare Foundation, Viterbo University School of Nursing, and Western Technical College Foundation, and Winona State University. Whereas this community event celebrates and recognizes excellence in nursing and the ongoing commitment of nurses to serve the area, now therefore, I, Mayor Mark Peterson, hereby proclaim April 25, 2019, as Nursing Research Day in the city of Winona. Also, check my list here. Also, the governor is coming to Winona. Governor Tim Walz will be here tomorrow. From 12:30 to 1:30, he'll be at the central fire station. And the purpose of his visit tomorrow is to highlight local government aid. This notice, I think, just went out. We want to be careful about it. Forum for the council members, but I will be there, and two other council members, if they wish, can also come without a problem. You are going?
I'll go as well.
Okay. All right, so we have our...
Shoot.
Because it was not noted. So we got... Oh, and Margaret Johnson is here to... She'd like to have a couple of minutes to talk about a project she's working on.
Hello, I'm Margaret Shaw Johnson. I thank you for this opportunity to address the council today. Several years ago, I learned about the story of James Stovall. He was a former slave who made his way to Winona after the Civil War. James taught himself to read and write, and he opened a restaurant here. Over a period of thirty years, he became a well-respected citizen and a wealthy man. He served on the board of trade, he served on the grand jury. He built two large, impressive downtown brick buildings. One of them was designed by the architect Charles Mayberry, who designed the courthouse and the Methodist Church. James was much loved, and he was a generous philanthropist. I was amazed at that success, that one who had been an illiterate slave could have accomplished so much in Winona. But James was not the only former slave to end up here. There was at least one other man who shared his history, but did not fare so well, suffering from poverty, ill health, and probably severe PTSD. He wandered the streets, homeless and destitute. Why did these men have such different fates? And what part did Winona play? How did we in Winona receive these refugees who came fleeing war, bondage, and oppression? And how do we receive them now? I decided to write an original play based on the lives and experiences of these men. Thanks to some generous locally-focused foundations, I was able to raise enough money to produce the play and to hire a professional African-American director and two professional black actors, all from Chicago, to play the principal parts. I was not able to find middle-aged, mature, experienced black actors here in Winona. In writing the script, I consulted with Alex Hines, who was the former diversity director at Winona State, and with Minneapolis African-American playwright and producer Carlisle Brown. They helped me to get the cultural perspectives right. I then collaborated with River Arts Alliance and scores of talented, experienced local artists, actors, theater designers, graphic artists, musicians, and artists of many other disciplines. And I worked with other local organizations and businesses to bring it together. Now the play, which is entitled Mr. James and Mr. Jeff, will be produced at the Masonic Theater on May 16, 17, 18, and 19. The play will also feature both sets of the newly restored rock. And all ticket revenues will be donated to the theater restoration project. The city has worked closely with me in this endeavor. Steve Sarvi, Chad Hubel, and Lee Gundersheimer have all been immensely helpful. The goal of this project is to educate about Winona history. It is also to demonstrate that those of us in the arts community will support the Masonic and the restoration effort as much as we can. We may not be able to contribute millions, but we offer our talents and our energy. And if we get the public support and attendance that we're counting on, we may be able to contribute some thousands of dollars to the project. I am here tonight to inform you about this effort and to ask for your support. This is a benefit for the city. We hope you'll show your support by coming to the show and by promoting it to your constituents. We will also ultimately ask that the city accept our ticket revenues as a donation to be applied to the Masonic Restoration Project. That's it, folks. If you have any questions.
What's not to like about that? Appreciate your efforts, Margaret, and look forward to the play.
Okay, thank you.
And finally, I'd just like to wish everybody a happy and safe Easter.
Oh, I thought you were going to say Tax Day.
No. It's too late for that.
Say, Mayor, is the chief going to prepare lunch tomorrow?
I don't know what was worked out on that.
No. We're providing doughnuts, he's buying doughnuts.
I try.
Okay, thank you.
They wisely said thank you, but no thank you.
Okay.
All right, city manager?
Thank you, Your Honor. Just want to thank everyone who was part of or attended any of the Dementia Friendly Week events at the Friendship Center. It was from the choir to the guest speakers. It was a great event, and really showed off the great work that's being done here in the community.
Is that it?
That's it.
All right, roll call.
Mayor Peterson.
Here.
Councilman Thurlie.
Here.
Mueller.
Here.
Alexander.
Here.
Iden.
Here.
Porcakowski.
Here.
Scholmeyer.
Here.
Under the petitions, requests, and communications, item 3.1 is the 2019 Steamboat Days Agreement, which is Wednesday, June 12 through Sunday, June 16. And Fred Benning is here to make a presentation. If you have questions for him.
I make a motion to adopt the attached resolution.
Second.
Motion by Michelle, seconded by Paul. Fred, would you like to say something?
Well, I'd like to, I guess, mostly in Winona. We have some of our board members here, out of our twenty-four board members, to support the petition for the agreement tonight. As you know, Steamboat Days is Winona's biggest citywide celebration. Each year, we're trying to add new things. What we do with our money, we're a nonprofit, we put it back into Steamboat Days, we make it bigger and better, and we donate things to the city. So that's where the money goes for our celebration. We've got a couple of new things coming this year. For the parade, I've got confirmation of the U.S. Navy Band out of Chicago this year, first time we've ever got them. The U.S. Army Band, the Thirty-fourth Infantry out of the Cimby's, liked it so much here last year, they requested we come back. So we got two military bands in our parade this year, which is amazing. One other group, one of my favorites, is the Milwaukee Dancing Grannies. They're going to be back this year. So we do have high school bands coming. We've got five area bands, a couple coming a long distance this year. I got one from Foley coming, St. Peter. So they're coming a long ways for our parade. And naturally, they come to perform and try to win money, which we have professional judges judging them. I would... Well, I guess we're okay on the agreement. I do have one other thing here, since the meeting went fairly well. The pre-council. I do have a plaque here, President's Award, this year I'm giving these out, the different things. And this one is going to the city of Winona and the mayor for your outstanding support for seventy-two years of Steamboat Days, the longest celebration that Winona has had. And believe it or not, I've probably been at every single one of them.
We believe it.
It's a pleasure for me to be part of this group. We've got a bunch of guys and gals that really have supported us on the board. We do have some disagreements at times, but we seem to work those out and make it a bigger and better Steamboat Days. So I'm just really happy that we get the support from the council that we have been getting, and I hope that continues, because again, this is a citywide celebration, and we all have to be involved with this. So I'm real happy. This year, we're moving down to the New Plaza area, Main Street. Our vendors will be on Main Street from Second down to the railroad tracks, and our Beverage Garden will be up on top with a beautiful view of the river. So we're kind of guinea pigs on this, and I hope everything works out for us for this year. The carnival is taking up our old space where the Beverage Garden was. There will be a kiddie land, as you see on your maps. And behind the theater, we're looking to get that again this year. We do have alternate plans for the future, like moving to Mainer Johnson Field. So any questions on the agreement?
Any questions? I'd just like to say thank you for what you do every year, you and your hard-working committee.
Thank you.
It's a great thing for the city.
Chris, they want to do a picture.
They're both going around the other way.
You're the little... Pretty green there.
All right, thank you.
All right, well, thank you. You bet. Appreciate it. No questions, I'll sit down. Now, that's the...
All right, we have a motion and a second. I think we're ready to vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries?
Item 3.2 is the request for licenses for the 2019 Steamboat Days festivals, including the temporary on-sale liquor license and the carnival license.
Move to approve the license.
Second.
Motion by George and seconded by Eileen. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries?
Item 3.3 is the craft beer tour agreement with Leighton Enterprise for their event to be held Saturday, June 29.
Make a motion to approve the license agreement. Second that.
Motion by Michelle, seconded by Pam. Discussion? George?
I see Matt is here, if he has something he wants to say. I'd hate to have him say on the air tomorrow that I came down there and he never called on me.
If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Questions?
We appreciate your support.
Yeah, we appreciate what you're doing.
How many vendors are you looking at this year?
Fifty.
Fifty?
Yeah. It'll be fifty, and probably all the same as last year, it's one-hundred-and-fifty per race in total.
Minnesota, Wisconsin, Iowa, furthest?
Yeah, I think the furthest one we have is North Dakota. A lot of Minnesota, a lot of Wisconsin. So untapped territory would be a little bit more across, but you know, there's rules and where you can distribute and where you cannot. But yeah, bulk of them is going to be Minnesota, more of Minnesota, red and brown. So, yeah, we're excited about it.
All right. Any other comments or questions? If not, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? You got it.
Thank you.
Item 3.4 is the temporary wine and beer license for that event, to be issued to big brothers and big sisters of the Seven Rivers region.
Move to approve that license. Second that.
Motion by Michelle, seconded by Pam. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries?
Item 3.5 is the request for temporary liquor license for the Polish Cultural Institute for their event on Saturday, May 4.
Move to approve the license agreement.
Second.
Motion by George, seconded by Michelle. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries?
Item 3.6 is an application for an on-sale three-two license for Rivers Hotel for the new Fairfield Marriott Hotel. Move approval of that liquor license.
Second.
Motion by Michelle, seconded by Eileen. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries?
Item 3.7, a request for a 5K and 10K by Bluffy Montessori to be held on Saturday, May 4. Move approval of that request.
Second.
Motion by Michelle, seconded by Paul. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries?
Item 3.8 is the Olmsted Street closure for August 3.
Move approval of that request.
Second.
Motion by Michelle, seconded by Eileen. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries?
Item 3.9 is the paperbacks and pieces street closure request for Saturday, May 11.
Move to approve that request.
Motion by George, seconded by Michelle. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries?
Item 3.10 is a request for after-hours use of Auburn Heights on Friday, May 31, and Saturday, June 1. Move approval of that request.
Second.
Motion by Michelle, seconded by Al. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries?
Item 3.11 is a farmer's market license agreement for the Main Street and part of Levy Park for 2019.
I move approval of the license agreement with further discussion about the fees at our next meeting, perhaps?
I'll second that.
Motion by Michelle, seconded by George. Any discussion? Chad?
Mayor, council, as we discussed in the pre-council, that's correct, we are recommending that the rental fee for Levy Park be discussed at the next meeting. However, they are asking for approval to park it trailer and municipal lot number 10. So whether or not we want to approve that as well as within your discretion.
Is that in your motion?
Well, did I misunderstand that they just wanted to park it there during the event?
Mayor, council, this would be for the duration of their agreement, with the exception that it would need to be moved out during Steamboat Days and for the big money event.
No, that is not part of my motion.
Okay.
I would need to have more discussion about allowing people to permanently park in a park, in a public parking space. So no, I would remove that as part of my motion.
I would agree with that exception.
Well, it was never part of the motion, so I don't think we need to remove it.
Well, it was, because I misunderstood.
Was it?
I thought they only wanted permission to park it in that lot during the event, but they wanted it there for the entire season.
Okay.
So I had George as the second. Are you okay with taking?
I'm okay with that, yes.
Okay. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Item 3.12 is the Midwest Music Fest License Agreement Amendment to add the municipal parking lot number nine. And this would be for rain backup.
I'd make a motion for the change to the agreement.
Second.
Motion by Michelle, seconded by Paul. Discussion?
Is anyone here from the music fest?
I don't see anybody. Jacob?
Oh.
Do you have a question for Jacob?
Just a good event, if there's something you want to tell us about the event that might be different this year, or... So no, that's a very popular event in the town as well.
We're utilizing the levy for the first time, of course. We did help program the light of the levy on for the September event last September. It's our tenth year, and we're always appreciative of the support from the city and local businesses and presidents, and so we're looking forward to it, May 3rd and 4th.
All right, thank you. We'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries?
Item 3.13 is a request for a stop sign at St. Charles and Wabashaw. The ordinance, I would clarify, is to make Wabashaw Street view through highway.
Move to approve the attached ordinance.
Second.
Motion by Pam, and seconded by Michelle. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries?
Under new business, item 5.1 is to amend the Human Rights Commission membership.
I would move to introduce the attached ordinance to amend the membership.
Second.
Motion by George, and seconded by Michelle. Jacob, did you want to address this?
Just to say that I want to thank Monica, the city attorney, for... We've been talking about this for a while, and so finally doing it is good. We had trouble sometimes filling some of the spots with the previously listed county offices, so we're expanding that. We're also expanding the availability of for how many people from outside of the city of Winona can be on the commission. I'm looking for it. That's pretty much it.
So do I understand you're having trouble filling those outside the city of Winona positions?
Um, not...
No, the designated seats.
The designated.
For Winona County.
Oh, the designated. They were too narrowly... Okay.
Yeah, it was narrowly written, and then after Sally Kaminsky retired as the clerk of court, we never had anyone fill in her spot and some of the other spots. So this will help recruit potential, potentially interested, other relevant county staff to have a seat on the commission.
How many vacancies do you have at this time?
Six.
Six?
And two of those are from the...
Right, two designated, one county and then a couple.
Two designated, and then four regular seats.
All right, well, if anybody wants to serve that's listening, apply online. Any questions for Jacob? Is that a motion? All right, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes?
Item 5.2 is a letter from the Human Rights Commission regarding the driver's license legislation.
I would move to support that letter. Is that what you're looking for, a motion?
Second that.
Okay, motion by Paul, and seconded by Pam. Discussion? Eileen?
Just that I think this is really great. I did some research on other cities that have moved in this direction, and it seems like there's been really positive results. And Minneapolis and Northfield have both adopted programs like this, and they've been really successful. So I think it's a good idea for us to get on board.
My understanding is that the sheriff supports us, as well as the police chief?
Yes, he signed the CJCC. Signed.
And Michelle, you serve on that for the city now?
Yeah, he actually signed as an individual, but he also... There was consensus among that group in support of a letter written by us, not this specific letter. And, but he, as a sheriff, also is supportive.
And I would say this text is directly, is the same text that you would have signed on for the CJCC. And I did want to point out Rosina Tenma, who has been working on this, and she's now a member of the Human Rights Commission. So thank you, Rosina, for your work. And yeah, we, the Human Rights Commission, urge you to support this resolution and send a letter to Senate leadership and House leadership, even though they've already voted, and the governor.
I sat next to a woman at the Project Fine Gathering table, and she was talking to me about her problems with driving. She doesn't have a license, and she's racking up... She has to drive. She doesn't have a choice, according to her, because she needs to get groceries or something or another, and so she's been racking up tickets. But I don't know, it sounds like this is something that would help somebody like that.
And it would be, it would be separate, it would be very clearly marked that it's not valid for real ID purposes. It benefits folks that are in the, that don't have access to the immigration process, also the homeless, the elderly, and other groups that have difficulty obtaining access to their documentation to get a regular, or a standard driver's license.
Do they have to go through a driver's training and pass a test and all that?
Yes. That's why the public safety issue is so important. It's, they would be... This is actually basically reversing and changing a little bit a bill that was passed in 2003 that removed, it added some extra requirements. And so this is sort of reversing that and beefing it up, making it a better, a better program. And twelve states already have it, close to District of Columbia. And it really helps with economic growth, it helps with creating that sense of belonging, civic engagement. And so when you're able to drive, you're able to do more things, as you mentioned.
Michelle?
So for me, driving is a privilege, not a basic human right, but I think I'm also misunderstanding what you're trying to do. Because what I understood is that you wanted to get them a state driver's license, but so when you go online to look at that, you need to have either a U.S. passport or a birth certificate, and undocumented people don't have access to those things typically. So I misunderstand... So to me, this issue is so complex, because I don't understand from a state level how we would implement this. So...
It's...
And then I'm not worried about voting, which I know some people are. I know there might be some issues with that, but I'm less concerned about that than I am how you confirm that the person on the ID is the person on the ID, and how do they even go about applying? And then once they apply, how can we assure them that they won't be targeted by ICE or deportment? So to me, it's like a big... I'm pro-immigration. I actually feel very strongly for these people that are trying to work here, because I think we need them, not only in Minnesota, but in the country, but I... This makes me uncomfortable, but what you're talking about sounds different to me. It's like a different type of ID.
It's, it, there would be, it would be labeled that it can't be used for specific things. I am not that completely knowledgeable about House File 1500, which was passed, but if you go in and read it, it does have what the process would look like, and how it would be different from a standard driver's license.
You said House File 1500.
Yes.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments? George?
Yeah, just, just a comment on this is that, you know, as far as, you know, the driving licensing end of it goes, that, you know, if you meet the criteria, you pass all the tests, the written, the behind-the-wheel test, I don't know where this comes in to be a human rights issue. I don't think, you know, if you have to pass the test to drive, and you have to meet your criteria, if you don't have that, I don't know where this is a human right issue, is all I'm saying so.
Um, well, you still have to do that, um, and the bill states that. This is just granting access to those folks who don't have access to the normal documentation, or people who change addresses quite a bit, like the homeless. So that's where the human rights aspect comes in, is to be able to have the access to obtain some, some form of driver's license so that they can function in our city and state and under.
Other comments? Concerns? Are we ready to vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Uh, how many were opposed?
Two.
Two? Okay. Five, two. Passes.
Moving on, item five point three is a request from Winona County regarding the excess bridge land.
I would move to approve the county's request stating that the city of Winona will not seek to acquire these parcels.
Second.
We have a motion by George and a second by Michelle. Discussion? I guess I'd like to just maybe, well, go ahead, Paul.
Well, I'll be abstaining from this.
Okay. Do you want to, that's all you wanted to?
Yeah.
Okay. I guess, you know, one of the things I wanted to, I, I support the motion. I, I think that, you know, I think the city should cooperate with the county whenever they possibly can. I think it's important. Um, I think that there should be some kind of an understanding, though, when the documents maybe are drawn up, that in the agreement, that the city would, or that the parking, if the parking is developed on this property, that when the county's not using it, for example, in the evenings, that it can be open to the public, rather than just tied up for just county use only. I mean, that's one of the things, I guess, I would hope to see on this. Other comments? Okay. Al?
Just a comment, I mean, response to yours, I mean, I, I don't know that the existing county lot is open, other than for people who are using a space to go to the courthouse right now. And my understanding is that existing parking lot is where the jail would be expanded into.
Yes.
So I don't know how.
Well, I think, well, I think part of this, my understanding is that part of this excess bridge land is going to be used for parking.
Right.
And why would the public not be able to use it?
Well.
At certain times when the county's not using it?
I was just.
I guess I'd want to, I'd like to see that clarified.
Well, I agree with that, yeah.
So you're maybe suggesting that it be public party, parking not specified only for county business parking?
Public parking when the county's not needing it.
Well, I, I would agree. I think that also not just evenings, but also weekends.
Right. Whenever they're not using it. George?
Like the lot they have now, as we all know from just being on jury duty here back January and February, that lot fills up during the day when the courthouse and things are operating, and the other police officers and things, but after four o'clock, when the shifts end and, you know, the administrative people go home, there are a lot of vacant spots in that lot, and I'm sure that the city could park in there. So unless if you were at one of the establishments, you wouldn't want to park there and go to get your car.
Right.
That really wouldn't be the smartest thing to do.
But is that, is that the case? That you can park there, or is it just assumed you can park there?
I don't, I park there already, so.
It's for county business.
I think the center part of that existing is for anyone, and then there's some others that are by permit.
I agree with Mr. Van Damme, yes.
I'm supporting the motion.
Okay.
You know, it's the details here.
Well, I support the motion as well. This is not a part of that motion, but.
It would be good to have that as part of the negotiations.
I will, I will convey that message to the county administrator.
Happily, I think.
Very happily.
All right.
Be a very strong suggestion.
All right. Are we ready to vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries.
Item five point four is the Winona County All Hazard Mitigation Plan Update. Make a motion to approve the resolution.
Second.
Motion by Michelle, and seconded by Eileen. Discussion? Hearing none. Oh, George?
Bring the chief up. I hate to have you say nobody called on me.
All right, well, we don't want to do that.
He was worried about that.
Teeth in your neck, so.
I bet he was worried.
Mayor Council, the multi-hazard mitigation plan is a requirement for the Federal Disaster Mitigation Act of 2000. Development of this plan is required in order to maintain eligibility for federal disaster relief and assistance. In order for communities to be eligible for the future mitigation funds, we as a city must adopt the resolution that's before you. Just, I believe it was in 2014, I presented this to council, the same, basically the same resolution. Federally, they're required to update this plan every five years, so, here I am.
All right, thank you. All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries.
Item five point five is the Veterans Memorial Maintenance Agreement. Make a motion to approve the attached agreement.
Second.
Motion by Michelle, and seconded by Alan. Deception? George?
I think Jim May with Tri-Sodding is doing a very, very good job down there, keeping it well, well-maintained and looking good all year long, so.
All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries.
Item seven point one is council concerns.
Why don't we start with Michelle?
Just happy Easter. And, and if you have a chance, George will be the Easter bunny. He loves to have people come visit him.
And where will you be, George?
The corner of Broadway and Franklin at the home of Dave and Judy Stoltman. This will be, I believe, our 25th or 26th year, so.
That's why he's growing the moustache.
You told me.
Is he telling that?
Eileen?
Um, I just wanted to, um, you mentioned the Earth Day earlier, and I know East End Rack is having some events going on that day, and they're going to be giving away seeds from the seed bank and library, so I will be there getting more. And, uh, also, I've had a lot of questions from folks in Ward Two about what's moving forward with Madison and with Mr. Brenner. I know we just kind of hear what's going on through the newspaper, so I don't know if there are more updates, or if there's anything we as a city can do to maybe pursue some sort of public-private partnership with Mr. Brenner as he keeps reformulating plans, but it's a source of stress for all of us in that neighborhood. So anything that staff can do to give us, give them an update, or anything like that would be great.
Yeah, thank you. Al?
Happy Tax Day.
Ah, there it is.
Um, just a reminder that on Wednesday, the 17th, you're in council chambers from 5:00 to 6:30 PM for those that live in the Wildwood Drive, JB Drive, and Presslock Way area. There will be a meeting about the water and sewer extensions in that neighborhood, and people can get questions answered about that. There is an FAQ that went out to residents that are affected recently, in fact, I think today it did. And it's very well done. I appreciate the staff's work on that and explaining what, what obligations are or aren't coming to that area as far as water and sewer extension as they're extended. So it's a very good opportunity to find out and get your questions answered. Also, our city of Winona and the area ambassadors are, as we speak in the air, I believe, are pretty close to landing in Tokyo, Japan, on their annual April visit to our sister city of Misato, so we wish them a very wonderful time and a great experience, as I think everyone else who's ever been to our sister city has experienced. And also, a sympathy to the John Borman family. John was very active in the Dakota Unity Alliance early on, and the covenant that the city has adopted with some of the tribes in the Sovereign Nations, and wish his family a recovery as they get over that, that event. And so in that vein, I guess, a blessed Passover and a blessed Easter for everyone.
Pam?
Yes, I have a question, actually. We've been hearing a lot about the, the upcoming events at Levy Park, and I would like to, like an update one of these days on the, the Army Corps' response to our request for secure footing for some kind of an amphitheater shelter. It's, would be, would be good to get something down there. And my other comment is that I've been hearing from people in my ward. Ward Three is one of the worst for potholes in alleys, and I've collected already quite a few phone calls. So I know that we, that the repair of the alleys is an ongoing process. I'd like to see some kind of a schedule. The alleys in the Third Ward do seem to be deeper, bigger, and wider than most other places, and I'd like to see us get on those. Also, the project of paving the alleys, of, of really redoing the alleys completely, is scheduled to go into the budget, I believe, starting next year. And I'd like us to relook at the, the cycle of how the alleys, where we start with those alleys. I know that the, we heard that the, originally, they're going to start in the West End, and I would like to see us look at moving that into the central part of the city, to do the central part of the city first. That's, that's my, that's my comment.
All right. Paul?
Uh, two things. I, I just want to thank and acknowledge Margaret Shaw Johnson for, for really taking the bull by the horns and, and coming up with a creative project to open up the Masonic Theater to showcase, you know, really what we've been doing there, and, and to get things going, and the generosity that she's showing by providing, you know, the ticket sales to, to go toward the restoration. So I really want to thank her and, and her crew for, for doing that. And I also want to acknowledge, um, some cyclists, Pedal for the People, who have, who every month for the last six months have been doing, uh, little, little routes through town, and then stopping at a local watering hole at the end of their ride, and, and raising some funds for local charities. And they'll be doing another ride on, on Birthday Celebration Day, April 27th, and I just want to acknowledge them for the good work that they're doing, and, and bringing some focus to cycling in our community, and, and raising some funds for local charities.
Thank you. George?
Thank you. Nice picture in the paper this morning, so, very, very good article as well, too. I went around this morning, and I told them I'm going to start collecting newspapers, but nobody would give them up. So they all wanted to keep them for, for their souvenir, so. Nice picture, and I have mine left, so.
It's historic, George.
There you go, there you go, so.
Fixed income.
I would like to congratulate Bill Schmidt, longtime Winona wrestling coach, Winona High wrestling coach, on being nominated for induction into the Minnesota Coaches Wrestling Hall of Fame in honor of very, very well-deserved, for those that don't, that do not know Bill, Bill had some very, very good wrestling teams, and he built them, and he, he's just been great at it. He certainly deserves that honor. And also, again, I agree with you, Al, on, or join with you on the condolences to John Borman. John has come in front of our city council many times with projects he's been working on, and we got to know him, and very, very well individual, and wish his family well as they continue through the healing process. And also, Happy Easter. Thank you.
Thank you.
And on the consent agenda, there is one item, the approval of a minutes from both the regular and closed session on April 1st. Move approval of the minutes. Second that.
Motion by Michelle, and seconded by Pam. Any discussion?[1780.28]